councillors please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane. Councillor Shree Kerguee please return to your spot.
Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of land on which we meet and pay our respect to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Councillors, are there any apologies? councillor Landis.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Cunningham will be absent today and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton, to councillor Cunningham be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw your attention.
Sorry Chair, yes, yes, I have an apology.
Oh, excuse me councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, just remove the ca... Sorry councillor Cook be granted a leave of absence for this meeting.
May I please have a second up?
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk, to councillor Cook be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, consideration of notified motions. Councillors, I draw to your attention the notice of motion, item two on today's agenda. Lord Mayor, would you please move the motion?
Mr Chair, I move that council resolves to adopt the investment policy at attachment A, to adopt the debt policy at attachment B, to revoke the partial rebate of rates and charges in brackets pensioners' policy, adopted on the 25th of June 2020 by council resolution 762, sorry, not 627. To adopt the partial rebate of rates and charges for pensioners' policy at attachment C for the 2021/22 financial year, to revoke the partial rebates, rebate of rates and charges first home owners' policy, adopted on the 25th of June 2020 by council resolution 762 2019-20, to adopt the partial rebate of rates and charges first home owners' policy at attachment D for the 2021/22 financial year, and to revoke the partial rebate of general REIT rates, not-for-profit organisations' policies, adopted on the 25th of June 2020 by council resolution 762 2019-20, to adopt the partial rebate of general rates not-for-profit organisations' policy at attachment E for the 2021/22 financial year, to revoke the payment of overdue rates and charges policy, adopted on the 25th of June 2020 by council resolution 762 2019-20, to adopt the payment for overdue rates or charges policy at attachment F for the 2021/22 financial year, to revoke the partial rebate of rates and charges job seeker policy, adopted on 25th of June 2020 by council resolution 762 2019-20, to adopt the partial rebate of rates and charges job seeker policy at attachment G for the 2021/22 financial year, to adopt the partial rebate of rates and charges not-for-profit kindergartens' policy at attachment H for 2021/22 financial year, to adopt the infrastructure charges, debt management policy for attachment, at attachment I for the 2021/22 financial year, and to delegate to the chief executive officer all of its powers under section 11 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010 specified in column one of table one of the general conditions of delegation as set out in table one, and to adopt the Brisbane Infrastructure Charges Resolution number 10 2021 at attachment J with effect from the 1st of July 2021, and to approve the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated 14th of June 2021 at attachment K.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor, that council resolves to adopt the investment policy at item, at attachment A, to adopt the debt policy at attachment B, to revoke the partial rebate of rates and charges pensioners' policy, adopted on the 25th of June 2020 by council resolution 762 2019-20, to adopt the partial rebate of rates and charges pensioners' policy at attachment C for the 2021/22 financial year, to revoke the partial rebate of rates and charges first home owners' policy, adopted on the 25th of June 2020 by council resolution 762 2019-20, to adopt the partial rebate of rates and charges first home owners' policy at attachment D for 2021/22 financial year, to revoke the partial rebate of general rates not-for-profit organisations' policy, adopted on the 25th of June 2020 by council resolution 762 2019-20, to adopt the partial rebate of general rate, not-for-profit organisations' policy at attachment E for the 2021/22 financial year, to revoke the payment for overdue rates or charges policy, adopted the 25th of June 2020 by council resolution 762 2019-20, to adopt the payment for overdue rates or charges policy at attachment F for the 2021/22 financial year, to revoke the partial rebate of rates and charges job seeker policy, adopted on the 25th of June 2020 by council resolution 762 2019-20, to adopt the partial rebate of rates and charges job seeker policy at attachment G for the 2021/22 financial year, to adopt the partial rebate of rates and charges not-for-profit kindergartens' policy at attachment H for 21, for the 21, 2021/22 financial year, to adopt the infrastructure charges debt management policy at attachment I for the 2021/22 financial year, to delegate to the chief executive all of its powers under section 11 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010 specified in, specified in column one of table one on the general conditions of delegations as set out in table one, to adopt the Brisbane Infrastructure Charges Resolution number 10 2021 at attachment J with effect on and from 1 July 2021, and to approve the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee dated 14th of June 2021 at attachment K. Is there any debate, the Lord Mayor?
Point of order.
Point of order. Councillor Johnston.
Ah, yes. I ask that item, uh, numbered, well, in the consideration of notified motions, item number 17, uh, which is the ENC report, uh, at attachment K, is taken seriadum for debate and voting purposes.
At attachment K, the ENC report be taken seriadum for debate and vote. Does the room understand? Do I have to say that again? Lord Mayor, please proceed, uh, to debate except for item K. We will do item K second. Please proceed.
Okay, uh, look, I will be brief. The range of motions that have come through here, or components of the motion that have come through here, effectively update our policies for the new financial year when it comes to the provision of pensioner rebates, and we continue to provide Australia's most well-funded and generous pensioner rebate program, uh, and that is something that continues on. And so this sets the new policy for the new financial year. It does the same thing when it comes to, uh, the first homeowners, not-for-profit organisations, our job seeker, uh, partial rebate of rates initiative that we introduced last year as part of the Covid response, also the not-for-profit kindergarten's policy, uh, and debt management policies, as well as delegation of powers to the chief executive officer, once again, which happen each year to enable various decisions to be made by the CEO that appropriate, and also the infrastructure charges resolution as well. So, uh, these enable, uh, ongoing provision in most cases of rebates and support to various organisations, whether they're individuals or organisations that are not-for-profit, but it also enables the collection of infrastru... infrastructure charges as development occurs, which is obviously something that's very important going forward. And so this resolution, particularly the li... the second last item, enables that. I'll leave my comments to that.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Uh, thanks Chair. These items minus, at number 17, uh, as the Lord Mayor described, parts one to 14 and 16 are revoking those existing policies on investment, debt, remissions, pensioners, first homeowners, people on job seeker, not-for-profit organisations, and not-for-profit kindergartens, and also deal with the late payment of rates and infrastructure charges, debt management, and policies are always set at budget time at this time of, um, financial year. Item 15, uh, there is for delegations of matters to CEO specifically related to this, not related to the next one we'll be talking about, for applications for rate rebates, refunds, et cetera. Part 17, we're taking separately here, so we will be supporting these items here. It's important, it's important that pensioners and not-for-profits receive these rates, rebates and rates remissions, particularly because they are, um, facing such significant increases under this LMP administration, just like the rest of Brisbane, to pay for this Lord Mayor's warts and vanity project. So we certainly, we certainly support this relief for these people.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Uh, yes, I rise to speak on items, um, one through to 16. And I'd just, uh, make a few comments about some of these items, particularly at number two. Firstly, this is a policy that sets, uh, council's debt management limits, which we know over time this administration has increased the bank card enormously, and a few years ago put half a billion dollars in debt in the bottom drawer, never to be, uh, looked at again. In, uh, currently, uh, this, uh, policy will allow council to take on another half a billion dollars of debt this year, $453 million in debt. And we know, um, from what the Lord Mayor said, that's for some Olympics-related projects. So look, this council is on a debt binge. Most councillors who are here now probably weren't here, uh, back when this council was debt-free, um, but you know, it was debt-free a very long time ago. And since that time, the LMP and the Lord Mayor have gone on the most labour-like debt binge I've ever seen. And we're seeing that go from, um, it's mid, tick over $2 billion this year to, uh, another $455 million, so, uh, it's significantly increasing again. I don't believe the city's heading in the right direction, uh, when it wants to take on a half a billion dollar extra in debt, uh, but not tell our community what that debt is for. So I cannot support, I cannot support a debt policy and a budget that, uh, essentially, takes on debt but does not provide any advice about what it's for. So I certainly don't, um, don't support item two, and would ask that it is be taken seriadum for, uh, voting purposes.
Section two will be taken seriadum for voting.
Um, just, uh, on item 14, um, the infrastructure charges, uh, debt management policy, I just want to say, I don't support the approach that the LMP has, uh, to subsidising developers. They increasingly, year after year, uh, find new ways to subsidise developers, uh, and I just don't support that practice. So, uh, I'll just put that on the record. I do support, obviously, rebates for pensioners, that's a good idea, for kindies, um, and all those, all those sorts of things, but there are some areas here where Brisbane is getting, um, getting some of these things, uh, you know, wrong, in my view.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? The Lord Mayor.
I thank you. Just very briefly, uh, councillor Johnston referred to a debt binge and that it was labour-like. It, it is certainly not. We, we only borrow when it comes to building infrastructure assets. Assets. Concrete, bricks and mortar, things that have an intrinsic value to the community. We do not borrow for operating expenses, and we do not borrow to pay staff or to pay electricity bills or keep the lights on. That would be a labour-like debt binge. Borrowing for that form of expenditure would be like putting your weekly grocery bill on Afterpay. It would eventually catch up with you big time. So we don't do that. We borrow for assets that have a value. That has always been our approach, and that will always be our approach. And so, uh, we have made it clear, uh, and by the way, there was a comment about, um, borrowing for the Olympics before, um, the figure given was not correct. There is an allocation of approximately $200 million that could be related to Olympic expenditure, and that will be to buy land, which, last time I checked, was an asset. And it was an asset that increases in value every year. So that's the type of thing that we would borrow money for, not for operating expenses. I also did want to take umbrage to the idea that, uh, we're subsidising developers. Actually, we subsidise people's new homes. That's what we do. We subsidise the cost of new homes. Because, in the end, it's actually the homeowners and the home buyers that pay the cost of that new home. And when a subsidy is provided for some kind of development, it is subsidising the cost of homes for people. And so, uh, we hear time and time again this idea, uh, that it's about developers? No, it's about homes for people. And I think there wouldn't be a single councillor in this room that would suggest that housing affordability is a challenge, particularly, um, as our property market continues to heat up. And so, uh, those subsidies for homeowners are really important, because they help more people get into a home. And that is an important thing right now.
I'll now put items I, oh, excuse me, one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. I will now put item two. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston. And there is no second up. The division fails. We will now, the ayes have it on items one through 16. We will now move to item 17. The Lord Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chair. Item 17, which is the report of the ENC committee meeting held on 14th of June, uh, includes a few different items. Item A is a delegation of council's powers. This item relates to a review undertaken by City Legal into council's existing delegations of power to identify current delegable powers that are required for the good rule and governance of council. The review considered council's existing delegations of power under 22 Queensland Government Acts and subordinate legislation. Nine pieces of additional legislation were also identified as potentially containing powers that council may require or need to exercise, and those acts were also reviewed for these purposes. Over time, through the introduction of new and amended pieces of legislation, uh, there may arise administrative irregularities. And where an irregularity has been identified, it has been amended. As such, the delegations presented today for resolution, two-thirds are powers that are already, uh, determined by council to be appropriate for delegation to the CEO and ENC, and are simply being, uh, remade under the specific head of power in the Brisbane, uh, City of Brisbane Act 2010 and other legislation. And the remainder are areas where there's been, uh, changes in legislation, uh, that have occurred, and new delegations are required, uh, to make sure that we meet all of our legislative requirements. Item B is a deed of variation in, uh, payment in lieu of rates for Archerfield Airport. Some people may not be aware that, uh, our airports, Archerfield and Brisbane, um, do not pay rates. And, uh, because they were federally government-owned properties in the past, that have since been, uh, sold to the private sector, uh, there is a situation where, when they were sold, we negotiated for those properties to pay a payment to us in lieu of rates. So while they're not technically paying rates, they are paying a rate equivalent to us. That was not the case when the federal government owned the property. They didn't pay a single dime to us. But now, uh, we are getting, uh, some revenue out of these properties. Council and Archerfield Airport Corporation are the parties to this particular agreement, the payment in lieu of council rates and charges. An agreement is the result of the corporation entering a lease with the Commonwealth to operate the airport, which is what I mentioned before, uh, long-term lease. It requires the corporation to make payments to council equivalent to the amount of which would be payable if rates were charged. The arrangement was entered into originally on the 27th of June 2002. The agreement set out, uh, the agreed methodology for the calculation of payments in lieu of rates for the initial lease and for future periods. Since 2015, there has been a significant uplift in land valuations, and thus a higher rate equivalent payable to council. The valuations do not reasonably reflect the ratable value. So these, you know, these airports, obviously, there's things you can do at the Brisbane Airport, because it's a very large site, that you certainly can't do at Archerfield Airport. You can't build, um, racetracks and shopping centres or things like that on the Archerfield Airport. It's a constrained site, and the development potential of that site is very limited. And certainly, even if you could develop, the height that you could develop there is very limited as well, and the type of uses you could use, uh, build there are very limited. So, uh, it, it, uh, I guess basically what's happened is that, while the property value has continued to rise, uh, it hasn't been reflective of, um, the actual real market value of the property and the ability to redevelop the site, which is very limited, if not, Neil. So, uh, this is a matter that's being pursued through the valuer general and also through council, and this deed of variation achieves a good result for both parties, um, and I recommend this to the chamber.
Further speakers?
I haven't finished yet.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
I just briefly...
Typically, that statement means it's over. Please, Lord Mayor.
Item C is the councillor expenses reimbursement guidelines. Obviously, there's, there are things that, in the role of councillors, we will pay for ourselves and seek reimbursement for. That is the standard, um, and has been for a long time, and this policy updates exactly what you can do that for, and, um, the circumstances that provide for transparent and effective process management and decision-making, that's in the public interest, the good governance, processes, and also ethical and legal, uh, standards of behaviours for councillors. So it covers things like the payment of expenses, the facilities which, which a councillor is provided, including office facilities, uh, and, um, sets out, uh, the circumstances under which councils can be reimbursed for expenses.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks Chair. The clause I in this, or part A in this one is the, um, expense reimbursement that we just, um, heard about as a result of legislative changes, um, which mean that, um, councillor expenses must be published in the annual report, which has been occurring already for some time, so obviously formalises that, uh, and also references facilities for, um, well, changes the reference for facilities for committee chairs to just chairs. So, uh, not sure whether that's just a change in terminology, or you will also be getting an office, includes the, the chair of council as well, so, not a committee chair, there you go. So facilities for the chair as well, uh, of council, not just committee chairs, which are separate to ward offices. The, we have no problem with the deed of variation for the Archerfield Airport Corporation, given the agreement was first made in 2002, um, and to be updated for this year. The last item on here, uh, suspect I, we differ slightly from councillor Johnston in what we will hear in terms of delegations, um, but, um, this is quite extraordinary that there are 70 new delegations, or over 70 new delegations coming through in this package. There was a review initiated last year, um, and, and I, I think the outcome of that is that, um, these, these new delegations, these over 70 new delegations are things that have been occurring already, um, and this has to formalise them, which I suppose does raise some questions about the, the decisions that have been made either by the CEO or by ENC in the absence of council making those decisions, because they weren't, uh, formalised until after this meeting. So I'm not sure whether now, once the review of delegations was done, obviously, um, the CEO and others have picked up that there was a significant issue, uh, in, in either the CEO or ENC making the decisions they already have been. Now whether a further review is going to be done, if anything needs to be tidied up. We did see that with leases coming back to council, that had to be, um, had to be tidied up. Perhaps we'll see that coming over, over the next few months to council, uh, but we want to make sure that all those decisions, whether they are being made by the CEO or by ENC, um, have in the past, um, actually been properly made decisions.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Uh, yes, I rise to speak on items, uh, A and C, and ask that item C be taken seriadum for voting purposes.
Item C, taken seriadum for voting purposes. Please proceed.
Yes, just briefly on these matters. Firstly, item A, the councillor expenses reimbursement policy. I do want to put a few, uh, comments on the record, uh, about this policy. Firstly, um, obviously it is important that council has a policy, um, that accounts for the expenditure of rate payers' funds when councillors are carrying out their duties. And the purpose of this policy, um, is to ensure that, um, the payment of reasonable expenses incurred or to be incurred by councillors for disdarging their duties and responsibilities as councillor, uh, are reimbursed, um, properly, uh, transparently, in the, um, public interest as the Lord Mayor has outlined. So in that sense, councillors are aware that they, uh, have to provide receipts for the expenditure of any council funds, and I think that is absolutely an appropriate way of, uh, carrying out, uh, any reimbursement that may be necessary. However, um, that does not apply to all councillors. So the Lord Mayor and the committee chairs, when carrying out their public duties, pocket cash. They do not have to account for a single cent of their allowances for their duties when they carry out their duties. Now let's be clear, this policy relates to, um, uh, councillors carrying out their official duties. So I'm not quite sure how they can pocket cash when they're supposed to be accounting for their, um, for their funds. So the Lord Mayor receives, uh, almost $100,000 in cash that he does not have to account for, uh, and the chairs, I believe, I think it's around $30,000 in cash, which they do not have to account for. Now I do not believe this is in the public interest. I do not believe this is, uh, uh, good governance. And I am extremely concerned that while there is one standard applied to councillors, uh, the, uh, Lord Mayor and the committee chairs, uh, are pocketing cash rate payers' funds.
Councillor Johnston, councillor Johnston, this is the reimbursement policy. This is, that's right. So it has nothing to do with, with remuneration. It's about reimbursement of expenses in the order of your business.
And I'm, I'm making the argument that the, uh, chairs and the Lord Mayor should be being reimbursed, not pocketing cash. I appreciate that that might be lost on you, um, but when a policy...
There's no need to be nasty councillor Johnston. There's no need to be mean to me.
I thought, I thought it was...
No, please, no, please, please just, just stick to the topic at hand, hey? Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, thank you for making the point for me, and I know when you interject into this, I must be getting somewhere, uh, you know, with the, with the argument. So let's be clear, um, that this is about reimbursing councillors for carrying out, uh, work duties, um, in their official capacity. Now, as I've just said, um, councillors have to do this, except the committee chairs and the Lord Mayor when it comes to their, uh, expense of office. They pocket cash. That is wrong. And when we had this debate, um, you know, a couple of years ago, I did suggest that we implement a scheme to ensure that they do account for this funding. So I believe that it is appropriate that the Lord Mayor and the committee chairs are reimbursed, uh, like councillors are, for carrying out their official duties. I do not believe they should be pocketing cash without any accountability. And, uh, the way in which the LMP has gone about this, and I presume generations of administrations going back since this policy was introduced, um, are simply allowing cash to be handed over rather than, um, public monies to be accounted for, uh, via a reimbursement, um, process. And I really think that that should be the way to go. Even if it's not a reimbursement, um, there must be some accountability to determine how this money, uh, has been spent. The purpose of this policy is to account for the expenditure of public funds, uh, and yet there are, the Lord Mayor and the committee chairs do not do that with really significant hundreds of thousands of dollars of council's money. Now with respect to the delegation powers, uh, there are some 220 delegations, uh, that this council has made, uh, and there are 70 new ones that are, that have been added. I absolutely do not support this item, and I will be voting against it. I've spoken many times in this place, uh, about, uh, delegations, uh, that are made. We are here to, uh, vote and to, uh, contribute to the good governance of this city, and when powers are delegated to ENC, to the Lord Mayor and the LMP, uh, there is no transparency. It means it happens behind closed doors. When powers are delegated to the CEO, he then on-delegates them to council officers, down to, um, sometimes a quite junior level. This is not appropriate. Let's look at some of the delegations that are happening. The power to decide to take an interest in land. So that means if council wants to buy land, they don't have to come to us anymore. The ENC or the CEO can make that decision. That is wrong. There are numerous other ones in here. There's a couple in particular I want to talk about. To manage the senior executives' employees and take any action in relation to the senior executive employee contracts. Now that's, uh, that currently happens, um, except for the CEO, where the Lord Mayor personally negotiates that. So that had to come to council for endorsement. The Lord Mayor has entered into a secret arrangement with the CEO of council for his salary, um, that is not in the public sphere. It is not accountable, it did not come through this council. It is not accountable, it did not come through this council. Now, there's a new delegation that's been required, which is asking senior executives' contracts will only be seen by the Lord Mayor, E and C or the CEO. That is wrong. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in public salaries should be on the public record. There is no problem with that from my point of view. There are some other concerning ones. To bid for the sale of land, to make an offer for the sale of land, none of that has to come back through council any longer. It's all being delegated away. One of the worst ones that's in here, and I'm just looking for it, is in relation to, aha, here it is. Let me read this delegation properly. To give instructions to elect to be a co-responder in an appeal. That is being delegated to E and C and the CEO. So let's be clear, this is where there are DAs that this council may have opposed. And the decision about whether or not an appeal will happen will be undertaken by the Lord Mayor and E and C, or possibly the CEO. So let's be clear, this is a process that has been hidden from view for us for some period of time. I don't know who's been inappropriately exercising the delegated power to date, but they're proposing to give it to themselves to do. Now, the decision to appeal should be one made on good grounds and it should be one that this council is involved in. If this council says no to a DA, it is right and proper, in my view, that we stick to that. It is one of the single most important issues that residents raise when a DA has had a no and then this council, it might elect to be a respondent, but then it will roll over at the first opportunity in mediation. Now, that process is going to be controlled by the Lord Mayor, the deputy mayor and E and C. So these delegations, in my view, the Lord Mayor was saying that they reflect irregularities. Well, exercising executive power without authority is not an irregularity. It is an abuse of power and a failure of good governance. And in some cases, I presume it may even be illegal. How many decisions have been impacted by the inappropriate delegations that have been going on in this organisation for possibly years? The papers before us today fail to outline the outcome of these inappropriate delegations. They fail to tell us the full extent of the problems that have been created. And we know this is a significant failure of good governance under this LMP that keeps happening because the same thing happened with community leases a few years ago. So firstly, it's not some minor irregularity. If it was a minor issue, it wouldn't be being debated on the back of the budget, tacked on like some dirty secret and being debated at seven o'clock at night at the end of the budget. It would have come through the normal process, but it did not do so. And the Lord Mayor and the deputy mayor and the CEO are trying to sneak this through to give themselves more powers to make them less accountable to this Democratic Chamber and to the people of Brisbane. And that is not a position that I support.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Unfortunately, for one particular councillor in this place, there's always a conspiracy theory. There is always a conspiracy theory. And particularly when it comes to the CEO, oh, I'll tell you what, there's bad blood there. This is the councillor that every year when we do a motion of special appreciation to the council staff, one councillor excludes the CEO. The CEO, yep, that's right. That. And claims today on the record that she thinks that he's not fit for his job. That's funny because he was fit to be the coordinator-general of the State of Queensland and the director-general of multiple departments. He was fit to work for governments on both sides, but you know what? Councillor Johnston will do a better job than Colin Jensen. Councillor Johnston will do a better job, apparently. The reality is, what we're talking about here, all conspiracies aside, are pretty dry, pretty dry topics. There's a whole range, and they're all listed out for every councillor to see, a whole range of delegations that are being made. For example, the Animal Management Cats and Dogs Act 2008. We're getting the extraordinary power to give identifying information for a cat or dog in accordance with section 39. We're getting the extraordinary power to give a dog owner a notice that the dog has in fact been registered. We're giving, we're getting the power to give a notice of registration renewal to a dog owner. We're giving the power to destroy a surrendered regulated dog. We're giving the power to the chief executive to issue a notice under section 175 in brackets 2. Or the power to extend the time for making a general review application. We're getting the power, extraordinary power. Excuse me. When it comes to the Coastal Protection and Management Act 1995, to certify on a plan of subdivision the matters under section 119 in brackets 2. To elect not to be the responsible entity for change application under section 206, under the Development Assessment Rules 2016. We're getting the power, if the application is accepted as a properly made application in accordance with section 3.5, to give a confirmation notice before the period stated in section 3.2 has ended. And we're getting the power to give a referral confirmation notice. We're also, if parts 2, 3 and 4 of the DA rules are not relevant, to end the confirmation period by giving a decision notice. We're also getting the power to act as assessment manager or concurrence agency and to give further advice about the application to the applicant. Subject to section 38.1, to give notice to the applicant in extending the decision-making period. When it comes to the Disaster Management Act, we're giving ourselves the extraordinary power to give information about an event or disaster to the district disaster coordination. Coordinator, yeah. So, I mean, I could go on. We're giving ourselves the power to display a notice about the possession of liquor in a restricted area. To display a notice suspending the designation of a restricted area. Or to give the Queensland Police Service written notice of a suspension. Where council is the public sector entity in providing infrastructure to refund any part of the payment not spent or contracted to be spent on designing or constructing the infrastructure. We're giving ourselves that power. Look, I'm not going to go on because the reality is, these are things that we have, as a full council, no interest in debating. And for the good governance of the City of Brisbane, if we spend our time debating these things, this is a big city we represent. And these are things that are rightly delegated to officers. Well, I trust the officers in our council. I trust the CEO, I trust the managers, I trust the officers. And I also trust that there are procedures and processes in place where if someone does do the wrong thing, then it's rectified and addressed and responded to accordingly. So I don't share the same concerns that councillor Johnston does. And I certainly don't think that these are all matters that should be coming to council for a full debate. They just shouldn't. It has been the longstanding practice in this council that the machinery and day-to-day operation of the council is done based on delegations to the CEO and other council officers. And that is the appropriate way. We can't be involved in every single decision that is made by this council. The reality is, we are setting the strategic direction of the council. We set the budget and we identify projects and priorities. But when it comes to some of the things on this list, we have no role and no purpose in getting involved in these matters. So I think this is very reasonable. There is no conspiracy theory here. These are things that need to happen and we're simply making sure that we don't use up the time of this place, this Democratic Chamber, in talking about, you know, dog registration and whether a permit or a notice should be sent out. These are not things that are suitable for discussion in this chamber.
I now put the resolution for item 17, attachment K, A and B. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. And on item 17, attachment K, clause C, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and councillor Griffiths. Please ring the bells. All councillors are present, so we will move to a vote. All those in favour of item 17, attachment K, clause C, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 23 in favour and 2 against.
The ayes have it, thank you. Councillors, can I please thank the staff and attendants who've looked after us these last week and a half and send our appreciation to everybody who's made this meeting happen. Thank you to all the councillors and I declare the meeting closed.